Um, I think Mark Hill is the fairy godfather here and you know, he's done a lot. So we're kind of like the, the old guard. He and I were the, the old mom and papa. And you know, he does as much on his end as I do on mine. I, I can't say, I mean, he really is my cohort in crime. And uh, so you know, there's always somebody out there willing to listen. There's always somebody out there willing to help. You know, if you're, if you need anything, you can just reach out. Somebody will be there, you know? If you can find us, we're there.
Um, and can you think of anything else that um, you'd like to share about your experiences um, within Savannah's community?
Well, you know, I talked a little bit about my neighborhood. Um, I have been the president of Kensington Park Neighborhood Association for about 15 years, I guess. Um, they told me that I'm either going to have to die or find my own replacement to get out of the job. And uh, nobody's, nobody's stepping up and I'm not laying down. So I guess I'm here for the duration. But it's, it's been a, it's been a lot of fun, a lot of challenge. Um, it's helped me a lot to, you know, get to know the city and the, the work, the inner workings of the city. Um, there's always bureaucracy that has to go, we have to go through to make sure our neighborhood gets the attention that it needs. So you know, it's, it's a lot, it can be a lot of work, but it's, it's good work and it's for a good cause. And I mean, I guess that's just me, you know? Um, you know, in the sixties, there was an expression, if not now, when? If not me, who? And I think I took that to heart and I've lived my life that way. And, and I'm grateful for that opportunity.
All right. Um, anything else you wanted to speak to or do you feel like you?
I don't know. I think I pretty much.
All right. All right. Well, thank you very much for sharing your history with us today.
Much, and thank you to the wonderful city of Savannah for doing this. Thank you for making sure that the history that we've worked so hard to achieve will be recorded for posterity and that someday, a hundred years from now, when somebody opens up this crazy time capsule that they can remember, I'm that crazy lady from Savannah. And uh, thank you all for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Savannah City Council members. Van R Johnson II, Mayor. Carol Bell, Post One at Large. Alicia Miller Blakely, Post Two at Large. Bernetta B. Lanier, District One. Dietrich Leggett, District Two. Linda Wilder Bryan, District Three. Nick Palumbo, District Four. Dr. Estella Edwards Shabazz, District Five. Curtis Partey, District Six.
As we start our workshop, our first item on the agenda, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good morning. Uh, great to be with you. We've got a lot of um, important workshop discussions today. Um, and so hopefully we can move through um, with some efficiency here. Uh, first, uh, we're going to talk through our equity framework. Our Savannah GPS, our strategic plan, um, council adopted equity as its guiding value. There were other values, but equity was its guiding value. Um, and from that, we had our wonderful consultants from Bee Culture um, work with us to develop a equity framework that we could use to um, view equity and what that means from a municipal service delivery standpoint and how we might measure our ability to provide better equity in our community um, through that framework. So moving in um, with our talk on equity framework, uh, we'll move through a discussion about a procurement strategy and project delivery method that we are um, using more and more these uh, days called construction manager at risk. C more, I'm going to give an update on that as well. We will do an update um, on the first several months of operation um, from the new urban uh, camping ordinance that council adopted on June 12th earlier this year. And I also believe um, that we would uh, recommend a um, executive session as well. So a few things to report through today. Um, so without further ado, um, please let me welcome James Whitfield of Bee Culture, um, who's going to walk us through a presentation and talk, and begin the discussion today about our equity framework. Thank you, James.
Thank you. Right. Well, hello, everyone. It is good to see you again. My name is James Whitfield and I'm going to walk us through the equity implementation framework. Uh, before I do anything else, I would like to start with a series of appreciations. Uh, the first goes actually to the council because without your clear direction, as city manager just said, that you wanted equity to be the guiding principle for the strategic plan, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. Uh, a second is to uh, the community advisory group. We're going to talk a little bit more about them, but they are in the room. They actually did the heavy lifting in order to make this happen. We facilitated. So if you're a member of the community advisory group uh, in the room, just raise your hand. Excellent. We had several lists uh, of the full uh, group is, uh, is there. Uh, I want to appreciate the city manager, uh, and the city manager's office for coming up with the clear direction uh, to ensure that um, the way that Savannah GPS is implemented will center equity by having this additional equity implementation framework. Uh, and then um, a lots of appreciation for the rest of the leadership team uh, here at Savannah for all of their help. Uh, and then last, but certainly not least, uh, for Dr. Tekeisha Brown, who was uh, our ride or die on this project. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bee. Okay. All right. And I probably, just like with the Oscars, I probably forgot to thank somebody like my mom or something. Okay. So uh, here's what we're going to do. Uh, we were told uh, to move briskly through our presentation, so I'm going to do that. Uh, our topics we're going to cover is a process review, like what did we do? And then we're going to get into an over, uh, an overview of the implementation framework and leave some, uh, some time for questions and clarifications. So here's a process review. Uh, our objectives were to ensure implementation of the strategic plan centers equity as its guiding principle. Um, we spent uh, a, a lot of time actually talking with each one of you as city council members and. and other folks to make sure that we understood what you meant by that, because that's what we wanted to make sure that we delivered. And then we need to develop the framework in ways that model what ultimately we're trying to deliver. So we wanted to make sure that the means by which we got to the framework modeled the kind of things that the framework itself was supposed to deliver. So we wanted to make sure that there was equitable shared ownership between staff responsible for implementation. We'll talk a little bit more about that phrase in a moment. But also that there was shared ownership with the community, including those who are most marginalized. And then last but certainly not least, make sure we effectively meet the needs of staff and council. So here are the process steps. We spent time observing and analyzing data from the community engagement sessions and the community survey. We attended those sessions. We reviewed the data really deeply. We had meetings to understand needs of staff leadership, and you are diversity champions on staff. We had listening sessions with city council members individually and neighborhood association presidents. And then we facilitated this community advisory group, again, the ones who did the heavy lifting to develop the framework itself. There are a couple of sort of things in the background that we want to make sure we bring attention to around equity as we have these conversations. These are things that we talked about with city leadership. They were the sort of in the background as we did the work with the community advisory group. So we just want to touch on a few of those as we get into this conversation. And the first has to do with the word equity itself. There's a lot of different opinions about how equity works, what equity is, and my intention here isn't to say that any of those things are wrong, but we do want to sort of make sure we have some common language about how we used it in this process. And we have found that while the word diversity and the word inclusion tends to be rarely, you know, fairly well-understood and agreed upon, the term equity tends to be a little bit more all over the place. So we have found it's useful to center ourselves around the idea of equity, thinking about it as it's not, I mean, as it's used in situations other than diversity, equity, and inclusion. So this is one of the ways that we have found to make it more straightforward and make sure that we have some shared language. So the way that most people run into the word equity first has to do with equity in purchasing a home. And so my goal here is just to make sure that we have, again, some common language. So when someone's purchasing a home, if we use this example that where the total house value is $300,000, the mortgage company or bank may own $200,000 or that. We would say the buyer's equity is the other $100,000. Separate from diversity, equity, and inclusion, the term equity is used to describe situations where there is more than one owner. That is true if we're talking about the stock market, which is technically the equity market. You're buying and selling equity shares. More than one person has ownership in the company. That's true if you're talking about a professional services company, like a set of lawyers or accountants. There are equity owners of the company. That means that there are multiple people, partners, that have shared ownership. Now, the reason that this is important is because there are some folks who argue that the idea of equity is somehow not American, that it's somehow made up. When the reality is, is that we have been using the idea of equity in this country for a very long time when we think about it as shared ownership. Now, ultimately, that's what we're trying to get to with our community and the city. Because we want to make sure that there's shared ownership between what the city is trying to accomplish and the people that you're doing the work for. So if we use this idea of shared ownership when we think about equity, then we can take a look at images that are commonly used in the conversation on equity and sort of help us understand why this shared ownership piece matters. So in the images that you see on the screen, you have image A and image B. And again, I'm assuming a lot of people in this room have seen versions of this before. The idea is that in image A, we have equality. Everybody has the same boxes. And in image B, we have equity because everyone can see over the fence and the boxes have been moved. But you'll notice we have a question mark there, and the reason is because I can't tell looking at this image if, in fact, that is equity. And what I mean by that is if someone who owned the boxes walked up to the folks in image A and said, "I am deciding on your behalf that you should move your boxes and that your outcome should be to look over the fence," you may have a better outcome. Like if you ask them at the end, "Is it better that you can see over the fence?" They may say yes. But that doesn't mean that that's actually what they wanted in the first place. In fact, if you've seen versions of this that have a third image that has no fence or people are sitting in the stands, one of the reasons that those exists is because we on the outside don't know what the people in the image actually want. You have to actually have shared ownership. You have to make sure that the people that you're doing the work with and/or for have some say over what is happening with them and for them. So if they decided that what they wanted was to see over the fence, and they decided the barriers to being able to see over the fence were the boxes, then yes, in fact, this is an image of equity. So when we talk about equity as shared ownership, there's a couple of things that are really important. The first is there has to be a shared definition of success. And again, as we think about this in the context of our communities, we need to make sure that the definition of success that we have around this table in City Hall is, in fact, shared with our communities. If the community's definition of success is something else, us doing something quote-unquote "for" them isn't actually what is needed. Second, you then can collaborate to overcome barriers to success. Then we can work together to say, okay, given the definition of success that I see, the definition of success that you see, how do we work together to overcome those barriers? And again, that requires us working with the community to make sure that we address the issues that they see. So equity isn't about deciding on someone else's behalf what they need and then doing that thing for them or to them. Equity requires working with the community to decide what is it that we're actually trying to accomplish together. Well, how do you define success? We may, in this, in City Hall, because you have experts, and you may see some barriers to success that people in the community may not see. That's okay. That's good. You're bringing your expertise to the table. However, they have expertise also about their own lived experience. And so making sure that we have shared ownership over defining what is our definition of success, and that then we work together, not do things two people or four people, that we actually collaborate, participate together to overcome those barriers, that is the operating system behind this entire equity implementation framework. One more piece we want to talk about before we shift into the framework itself, and it is this phrase that everybody in this room has heard multiple times, and that is that all means all. So what does that mean from a data standpoint? If we think about looking at data, and for this instance, we're going to talk about the community input and the survey responses. If you assume a standard bell curve, which is how most data sort of plays out, one of the things you'll notice is that in the middle of the bell curve, where you have the most responses, where people agree the most, you're likely to find views that are held by majorities. However, in the sides of the bell curve, where responses are less often, where people have said things less frequently, you're likely to find perspectives that reflect people in the margins of the system. And so one of the keys to making sure that you take, we take an equitable approach to accomplishing things, even as we think about things like what is our shared definition of success, what are the barriers that people see, is that we have to make sure that we are paying attention to people outside of that middle of the bell curve. What are they saying? Because they represent perspectives that are not, that are, that are usually underrepresented. And so when we move into understanding what is our shared definition of success, as we identify what barriers people may have, it is making sure that we create processes by which we pay attention to those perspectives in addition to the ones that are spoken more often, right? Like at the community input sessions, one of the things that happened at the end of the night was people sort of reported back comments that were made more often than others. Great. That's a useful thing. That sort of represents the middle of the bell curve. And part of our responsibility, and I would argue part of the responsibility of leadership in the room, is to also make sure that we understand the perspectives that were spoken less frequently to make sure we don't miss barriers and/or concerns that people have that may not have been represented in the middle of that bell curve. Okay. So with those things in mind, I want to walk us through the framework. You all have a copy of the document, I believe, somewhere in front of you. And so I'm going to simply use the slides as a way to sort of help organize us and frankly, a leave behind in order to make sure that as we think about, as you do this work moving forward, that you can, I see people looking for it. Do we have copies of the? I'm looking at Tekeisha. We're going to, okay, we'll pass them out. Make sure we have them. All right. So while you're doing that, I'm going to start with the Community Advisory Group. So we had local co-conveners that helped us lead a group of community members who are connected to broadly diverse perspectives. Again, you all have a list of the people who are involved. We had three workshops. One of the things that came up in a conversation preparing for this is we had three times we got together. However, there was a lot of work in between those times. So the community members really did a lot of heavy lifting in order to get us to this implementation framework. There was a lot of shared ownership. It's important to point out that we built this work on the real task force report. So one of the huge advantages that Savannah has compared to a lot of other places who are trying to do work like this is that you had previously done work with the real task force. That task force had a report that had a lot of really important information about it, had connected deeply with the community. And so rather than sort of start with a blank slate, the Community Advisory Group and us, we started with that task, with that report. And we worked to understand what is it that it can tell us about, again, some of those perspectives that may be outside of the middle of that bell curve. And then last but not least, we got specific input on community engagement and community participation and then potential community partners. One of the several things that came up in our conversations with council members was the desire to ensure that there's a lot of partnership and participation among community members in the implementation of the framework, I'm sorry, implementation of Savannah GPS. And so one of the things we asked the Community Advisory Group to do is to get really specific about how to do that well. The structure of the framework, there's four pieces. The first is equity building blocks, some core ideas that shape the framework. Two, equity impact watch points. So these are key data points to watch to see if equity is improving. So you'll be able to see whether or not the work that's happening coming out of Savannah GPS and the equity implementation framework, is that actually leading us to more equity or not? And we'll unpack that in a moment. Three, an equity implementation worksheet. This is a thing that the City Manager specifically asked for. A very straightforward tool that the, that city leadership can use to equitably plan, do and evaluate its projects. And then last but not least, there's a specific part about community engagement that I mentioned, recommendations for engaging people affected in the community. The next part of the framework talks about what are the uses for the framework, and this is one of the things that I really want to make sure we are clear about. And that is, so there are different uses for this framework for different groups. So first is for city staff. So as city staff does its planning, as it's doing implementation, after programs and projects, this framework is a method, provides methodology for being able to evaluate how we're doing. Like when we're doing planning, are we doing that in a way that ensures shared ownership among people in the city, or the different teams and departments in the city, service centers in the city, and also equally importantly, if not more importantly, shared ownership with the community during implementation? Is that actually happening? Check progress. And then afterwards, look back on lessons learned. What can we do differently in order to improve that in the future? However, this is also intended to be used by city council and community members, and I think that this is a really important thing. The Community Advisory Group was really clear about this, that we wanted to make sure that this is a document that council can use, that community members can use, to review proposals that are coming up. So when staff leadership brings proposals forward, you can take a look at this framework and say, okay, how does it actually fit with the expectations that have been set? A way to check for community engagement. So you can take a look at those recommendations and those opportunities and identify whether or not the city's actually doing those things. And then last but not least, for evaluation and review, again, after the fact, can we assess whether or not the work that happened actually advanced equity? And again, identify potential lessons learned. All right. So I'm going to go through some highlights of each one of the sections. So I want to start with fairness and equity. So one of the statements that you all have has to do with your equity statement. And in short, it talks about ensuring the city has, the city's guiding principle to ensure all residents, businesses, workers, and guests benefit from fair and equitable services and resources. So as we had conversations with council and also with the mayor, one of the things that came up was this idea that we need to be clear about where we're providing same services for everyone across the city. What is that baseline? What are we saying should be everywhere? And then what things need to be different? How do we need to customize and/or tailor things in order to address historical challenges, current challenges? And so the shorthand in this document is that fairness or equality has to do with those same services for everyone. And then equity has to do with those additional or different services to remove unfair burdens caused by history or current conditions. Let me give you a quick example. So if you think about housing, we want to make sure that there is safety codes for all housing everywhere in the city, whether it is a new apartment complex that goes up, a single-family home, if it is the cottages in Dundee. Like no matter what those things are, we want to make sure that there is clear codes that apply everywhere. However, on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, we have zoning that helps clarify what might be different in those places. And so from an equity standpoint, one of the things we need to do is make sure that those differences at a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, that we take a shared ownership approach, that the people that are there have some say over what's different in their neighborhood relative to other places. It doesn't mean you get rid of the safety code. But on top of those things, there are going to be differences of the kinds of housing, the approaches to housing that we may do on a district-by-district or neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. That's where the equity piece comes in. And again, what our encouragement is, is to make sure that the city is super clear about those things as you pursue the goals in the strategic plan. Another thing I want to point out is the application of equity. And again, this is a phrase that the Community Advisory Group developed. So this applies to all forms of injustice, including, but not limited to, barriers related to race, ethnicity, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, age, income, religion, disability, both developmental and acquired, indigenous identity, nationality, language, access to technology, and limited availability during standard business hours. Those last two were really critical from a community participation standpoint. One, the ability to make sure that you can access means to participate, either using technology or not, and/or the time of day during which those participation opportunities exist also affect whether or not people have an opportunity to have shared ownership over what's happening in their lives. Next, I want to talk about the watch points. So these watch points are key data points to watch for whether the city's efforts are making progress towards equity for each strategic plan goal. So each goal has its own watch point. So the city can pay attention to what's happening at the goal level, and then you can also sort of track progress at the watch point level. They're simply data points to pay attention to. Again, they are built upon issues raised by the real task force. It was really important to us to make sure that the concept around race didn't get lost in the work around equity. So starting with issues raised by the real task force ensured that the watch points took those things into account. The watch points are broader than race. However, they start with race, so to ensure that race doesn't get missed. And then each watch point, again, this was a thing that the Community Advisory Group helped develop, includes a list of intersectionalities and considerations. What I mean by that is it's a list of, each watch point is connected to lots and lots and lots of lived experience. And so the idea is to help the city understand what those connections are. And so each of those watch points lists a set of those things. So again, you have a copy of the framework in front of you. I want to bring your attention to one of these just as a way to help us through. Help us make sure we see it. So what I want to do is look at page five, which is around strategic plan goal number two. So what you'll see is first, the goal itself out of the strategic plan that you adopted. City of Savannah is dedicated to building strong neighborhoods, protecting housing, promoting the well-being of all residents while celebrating our unique and diverse cultures and supporting individuals, families, and communities. So that's simply the language directly out of So that's simply the language directly out of the strategic plan. That's the goal. And then we have an equity implementation watch point. So, here is the data point to watch about equity related to this goal. It is cost-burdened housing. So that's defined by the percentage of households paying greater than 30% income on housing by race, so disaggregated by race, as well as other groups who've been treated unjustly based on their identity or background. And again, this is tied to real task force report page number 68 and 69. So you can see directly in the real task force where this issue was raised. Why is this important? So each watch point has a set of bullet points that describe why it's important. So, the first, efforts to improve neighborhoods can sometimes lead to increased financial burden or displacement for existing residents. Avoiding gentrification is a critical aspect of equitable community development. So back to where we started with our example about housing. So of course, we want to have codes, and then we want to make sure that in each neighborhood, we're thinking about what's best for that neighborhood. Sometimes, when we do things to and for other people, we're fixing problems that actually force them out of the neighborhood. And so, the goal here is to make sure that we can pay attention to how the changes that we're making actually affect the people who live there. Second, cost burden in housing can result from ways that some people and cultures are treated unjustly across housing and employment interactions. And again, because the city already collects housing data, this is a practical and reliable way to measure change over time. It was really key for us and the community advisory group members to make sure that the watch points were data points that can be collected or already are being collected by the city, so that there was nothing standing in the way of being able to evaluate its success. And then there's the intersectionalities and considerations. When this indicator improves, it signals progress on broader injustices as well, because it's related to, and then it has a list of ways that it's related. So homelessness, for instance, as cost burden increases, risk of homelessness increases. So the data point isn't specifically homelessness. However, when you watch that watch point, you can understand that it has an effect on homelessness, transportation, enforceable fair housing protections, and the other things in this list. So again, I just want to make sure you're familiar with the way that the document is laid out. The next part of the framework is an implementation worksheet. Again, this is a document, a tool that the city manager asked for, so that when the city is developing a project or a work plan, it has, the worksheet lays out an alignment statement, what are the connections to the strategic plan goals and watch points. So for every new project or work plan, this worksheet says, let's be clear about how this actually connects to the strategic plan goal, and how does this affect or connect to those watch points? Second, what's our list for community engagement? Who's most affected and how will they be involved? So really clarify that right up front. And then last but not least, cross-team collaboration, making sure there's connections to other city staff doing related work. One of the comments that we've been talking about, or ideas we've been talking about with city leadership is, sometimes really well-meaning team members or departments, service centers, can be out doing work, however, their work may be adversely affecting equity work that someone else in the city is doing. So being really clear about the relationship between the work that's happening across the city departments and teams is a key piece of ensuring that we're paying attention to equity. And then last but not least, reporting and milestones, who we're reporting to and how often is that gonna happen? The last portion of the implementation framework has to do with guidance around community engagement, again, for both planning and advance and assessment. It is designed around a set of scenarios for addressing barriers to maximize engagement. Let me give you an example. I'm gonna turn us to our section community engagement, which starts on page, looks like 17. So wrong. On page, it's, yeah, okay. On page 14. So section four around community engagement. So, at the bottom of that page, you'll see the first scenario. So when engaging marginalized or underrepresented populations. You'll see on the next page, when navigating safety concerns and historical mistrust. Number three is when working with groups facing language and literacy barriers. So the idea is to make sure that as we engage with community, we can think about which scenarios apply. And it's really important to, again, the community advisory group wanted to be super clear about this. The idea isn't that you use only one of these. It's to make sure that you use them in combination based upon the various situations that exist at the community level when we're doing the work. And then last but not least, the list of community organizations provided by the community advisory group, some folks that you can start with for those conversations. Okay. I now move to that quickly, and I am hoping that I did enough in order to help you understand how the implementation framework works, and for you to be able to work with city staff in order to collaborate. Again, that shared ownership between the council and staff leadership to ensure that the work that happens with Savannah GPS, in fact, centers equity in its implementation.
Thank you, Jenny. And I want to also, I appreciate your name and the culture for the long engagement they've had with us through, even before we kicked off Savannah GPS and through this process. I think this framework and the watch points give us material and quantitative things to be able to check on. Sometimes not an easy conversation to have, especially when we talk about service security and for municipalities and equity, but this is a really important process for us to go through, and it'll be even more important for us to stick to as we move forward. So I know we, our, we've got a lot today in that presentation, deservedly took a little more, a lot more time, but I would answer any questions and have a discussion.
First of all, I want to thank you for the presentation. For us, equity is not a dirty word. And if it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. And so, I think our GPS, our strategic plan is filled with, not only our intentions, but our methodology about how we want this city to be. All has to mean all. All can mean something. So if there are any questions from council, I want to thank council for supporting it because nowadays, it seems like a radical concept, that all would be all. And, you know, we'll just be radicals. And I, as an ode to Dr. Johnson, radical is not a bad word either.
Sure is it.
Alright. I'll move to the back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm so glad, a great segue, when you mentioned Mayor Dr. Otis Johnson. And I do believe, Mr. Mayor, he's a part of our real task force.
He leads.
He leads the real, just wanted to make sure. Thank you so much, Mayor Dr. Otis Johnson, for your leadership, and, Mr. Mayor, for bringing the real conversation and the work that we have been doing nationally for some years now, but bringing that work to Savannah and putting the action behind it so that we could have clear, clear guidance and a clear blueprint and framework on how we are moving now and how we are moving forward into the future, especially when we are talking about this whole thought of this council and this administration about equity. So I want to thank you all so much for this work. And also, as you all were developing this as the, as the community involvement, also as a consultant, thank you so much for including our mayor and council, and we having one-on-one conversations in order for the documentation to be what we know and believe that our community and our constituents would want for the betterment of the city. The other thing is, I'm just so glad about it and just having a document in front of us to work from. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and, Mr. Mayor. Oh, okay, on this, on the slide that talks about equity building blocks, it's a question that came up into my mind in reference to the definition of standard business hours. Some people may need access, you know, after business hours. And so, what was the thought pattern in reference to the standard business hours?
I think you're specifically addressing the issue that the community advisory group raised, which is, as we think about community participation in particular, for any approaches to equity, we can't just do those things within the context of standard business hours. We need to make sure that we are thinking about people who can only engage outside of standard business hours, either because they have to work, or they have to care for someone at home, or for whatever reason that might get in the way. It's a thing that isn't always included and/or focused on in these sorts of processes, but the community advisory group was really intentional about ensuring that that was included as a part of the applications for this work.
Fantastic. I like that direction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll go proceed.
More of a comment, really. Thank you so much for the hard work that you do and the group's hard work. You know, four guiding principles that I look at when we make decisions, at least about my district, is accessibility, connectivity, equity, and opportunity. And I am, I'm so thrilled that we're here discussing equity today. It's not just a buzzword, alright? It is a guiding principle, and it's how we operate. And to that point, it's been very pleasing to see that our community engagement has been spread out between different hours throughout the day. So we may have something in the afternoon, we may have something towards the evening. And I guess this next thing is more directed towards my colleagues, but I challenge you all here on city council today, or at least to think about it in the coming weeks as we solidify a calendar coming up for the year. You know, we talk about being accessible, and I've heard from my constituents that they would like to see at least one more nighttime meeting than we used to have. Some of them feel like reaching out via technology is not enough, some of them would like to come to the city council meetings. It's not that they, it's not that they can't join online, it's just sometimes they'd like to be here to voice their opinion. So as we move forward in the next coming weeks, I would at least appreciate some thought by you.
We tried it for four years.
I know, I know.
You slowed up.
They're asking, I mean, four years ago, it may not have worked, or for the past four years, it didn't, but I still want to make sure that we're providing that opportunity for folks. It's not personally for me, it's for the folks I represent.
Just, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Just, Mr. City Manager, what Kirk said is, we tried it, it didn't work, and it created a hardship for staff who had to work here during the day, so we need to consider that to the day. And sometimes, we didn't get out here till 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock at night because staff had been here from 8:30. They still have their jobs they have to do, then you had to stay in addition to that. But I wanted to thank you, sir, for your presentation, but like all the presentations that we have, I want to personally know from the 3rd District, traction, movement, and end results, how do we get to where we need to be? It's good to have all this paperwork, but as a 3rd District Alderman, and I'm sure everybody else, what do we do now to make sure that you're moving forward on this? And it's just not going to be a presentation or something that's on the shelf that we don't move on. Great results from real, great, we had something yesterday in my district with Manny and his staff. Inclusion is very important. And sometimes, it's like Interpol because our constituents don't know what's going on, and then we give them too much information to consume at one time. This is a lot of information, all of the work that they did with real. And so now, we need timelines. Timelines are important, and so, thank you again for all the work that you put in there. But for me, I want to be able to tell my constituencies, you heard the GPS, this is where we're gonna go from A, B, C. This may be a roadblock, we come back to the table and talk about some things we need to fix that gap, but end results, movement is what's important to us, and timelines.
I'll start the answer, and the judge has something to, from this expert, I'd love to hear it. You know, there's kind of the saying, you know, there's people that talk and people that do, right? And I think that this is a topic where we can talk a lot. And what we really challenged with, well, how do we take the talk of equity, the talk of fairness, and try to put that in a system of doing? And, you know, in my world, what gets measured gets done. So how do we begin to measure what the value, the definition that this council has for equity in our municipal service, which we have, this council adopted? How do we take that definition and program that into ways that we can measure results? And I think that this has been the work of the equity framework with these watch points. Of course, the work isn't done, but this framework is a part of the Savannah GPS strategic plan. These watch points are things that we are going to measure and report on so that we can kind of, you know, move beyond the talk and start to move to the do. Now, are we gonna get everything right? Are these watch points gonna come back and say, hey, we're doing so great? No, I don't think that they will. I think that they're going to show things that we need to continue to dig into, other things that we're gonna have to measure. But this is where you start to move towards into action. And it's, this framework gives us a very, very tactile approach to how we're gonna work, just like Savannah GPS, where we're trying to get to something that is specific and something that we can take action.
Yeah, I agree. And I know we have to have some kind of process and some kind of framework, and this is a good start, but again, people want to know what the action is. We got how to get there, we want to know when we get there. That's more important to people, and they don't really wanting to really beat this up. They want us to beat it up. And timelines are very important. Thank you for that answer, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I wanted to just add to Alderman T's point, I think we can certainly explore accessibility of our meetings, I think, and I can't remember, it's actually, that's part of the reason why the city manager and I started Savannah at night. We started with capacity to do twice a year. We have capacity that can go four times a year. And the whole thought about that is that we would bring city government, all of our chiefs and department heads are available in a place to be able to speak directly to those individuals. And so, you know, we can look at how we expand that. I mean, the next one will be on November 5th, the state of the city. But after the state of the city, you know, we have team Savannah there for the purposes of engaging the record of residents in a way that they may not during counseling, obviously, be heard during public hearings. And, you know, those are, those are legally defined, so, but, you know, let's talk about it.
Can we, in addition to what he said, can we possibly have like, one evening meeting a year so that people can schedule it? And then, if that doesn't work, then we disband it again, because I'm really concerned about the staff and how it affected them being here all year long.
I understand that too.
We understand the citizens too, but we created it for four years and didn't get it really good.
And I think, I think there was a different dynamic on city council then too, as we move ahead and look forward. I just look at it from the sense that the people put me in this place, and that all of us are public servants in this room, even city employees, and that we move towards being this 24-hour city where we provide those services. And I think equity is good, and going back to not just being a buzzword, I think it's great, but we have to put it into practice. And if that means that schedules are adjusted, you know, sometimes they say equity is uncomfortable, and it can be, because for some people that, you know, for the discussion or for procedures that need to take place, schedules can be adjusted, but we all, every one of us in this room, employees, elected officials, we all work for the people that put us here. And that comes with the price of public service, but I'm not saying that everybody should work 12, 14-hour days, but I think that exploring the option of trying to provide that service is important to the folks that live in this community.
Well, yeah, I think that's kind of why we started with the opportunity to have the, all of city staff available, and like, forum residents to engage with them, that they would not be able to do during a city council meeting. And obviously, would not be able to engage except for a public hearing on something that is on the public agenda, so.
I think that was more so the concern that folks had.
Right, right. You know, I mean, if it's something that's on the agenda, I mean, obviously, that's said in advance, but they can ensure the council hears them in public, they can also write letters, as you know they do, they can contact the council as they do, contact as individually as they do. Again, I think we can certainly talk about how that looks and look at. I think we have some metrics in that that we can explore as we go forward. Anybody else have a question, ma'am?
Just a comment. I've listened to the discussion, and I'm wondering, is it more important that we avail services after hours versus the formal meetings after hours? services after hours versus the formal meetings after hours? Because I think as you were refer, as you were indicating, there really are, there's really not an opportunity provided for engagement during a public meeting, but I refer back to what the mayor Proton mentioned earlier in this discussion when she talked about, I think she was referring to services being offered during, after standard business hours. And if I can, I'd like to mention a change that the newly, it's not new anymore, but the current shirt instituted at the jail. I think some of us around this table heard him speak a couple of weeks ago when he talked about giving legal, the legal community access to the jail after hours. So if they wanted to meet with their clients at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock opening, I'm making that service available. So that's, that to me is an example of where we are, you know, going beyond standard business hours or the standard framework to make sure that the citizens or the folks who benefit, who would benefit from that particular act of providing an opportunity to access services.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for this presentation. It was very informative, and I appreciate it. We talk about the GPS, Mr. City Manager, and we talk about implementation. My question is, are we gonna do some type of program for the employees here, especially the ones in management positions, supervisors and what have you, when it comes to being equitable to our employees? Especially in our sanitation department and in, in departments where you have lower echelon type employees working. And the reason why I ask that question is because I get phone calls, and you know, because I tell you, about a lot of the equity disseminated in departments, it does not go around to everybody. So is there gonna be some kind of process where these individuals who are in positions of authority find out the same information that you're giving us? Will they be able to get this information as well? We talk about it, but the implementation process?
Yes, ma'am. We actually had a manager summit yesterday for all the managers in the organization. We talked about our values, we talked about Savannah GPS, we have those training opportunities for our managers, but we also, my new initiative now that we've got a strategic plan, now that we've got equity framework, is setting the Savannah standard, right? This council has invested mildly in Team Savannah. You know, we're paying everybody at or above market rate. This is a premier place to work. What that needs to mean is that we're creating premier results as well from it. So I think part of that, that equity training in our managers is also about creating the buy-in and pride that all of Teams Savannah needs to have for the work that we do. We manage the greatest city on earth, it's a special place, it's not like other places. So we have, we also have to set a high standard for our work as well, and we lean on, you said lower echelon, I think that our frontline staff, you know, they're the heartbeat of the city, they're the folks that are doing the work, and they know what the Savannah standard is gonna be. We're gonna make sure that our managers know how to manage, know how to get the work that we need out of all of our teams, and we're gonna make sure that everybody who's in a uniform, everybody who's got a work badge is treated fairly, that that is a part of our organization as well.
I hope so. Thank you.
I think, let me just add, City Council's made it clear about what the new world order is, and City Manager and team have embodied that as well. And now it has to become the culture change through the organization, which sometimes takes a little bit of time. And sometimes it takes movement of people to be successful elsewhere, if they don't accept or not willing to embody the same view of drawing equity as this council has. And so, we have to trust the City Manager and team to make sure that that is throughout the organization, as I believe.
We have to move people, but we don't want to move them out.
Well, I mean, I think people have choices, and so if they embody the vision of equity and that we have, then they'll, they'll be fine. But sometimes, as we've experienced, sometimes folks don't want it, and they just have to go be successful somewhere else. Alderman, lay it, and Alderman, lay it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you also, Mr. City Manager, and I appreciate your presentation. The, so the task has been given to us to tell you exactly what's going on in our communities and how we can be more inclusive within our communities. I wanted to make sure in your presentation that you did, and you, and you also did highlight that all of our communities that we represent, all of them have differences in, in where they live, how they live, where they work. So we wanted to make sure that everybody's thoughts and what they're, what they're going through in the community is brought, brought into one framework. And I appreciate you guys even asking us, or asking the city, the, the Neighborhood Association Presidents with their residents, their portion of residents, because we get 20, 27,000 people, but each Neighborhood Association President have a more intimate relationship with the people from street to street. And we just wanted to make sure as we move forward and the GPS shows us how to move the entire community as a, in a holistic portion of it forward, that's the Savannah actually supposed to look like. So when we start talking about our lower-level employees and people who are boots on the ground, those are the people who I like to talk to when we start talking about how we get things done. I don't want to talk to any directors, I don't like to talk to the managers, I like to talk to the people who are actually digging in the ground, or who can tell me what's going on, to the history of what Savannah is, because they're moving dirt, they're moving bricks, Mr. Mayor. These are the people who actually see what's going on, they live here, and to the point of a lot of people around this table, those are the people who are, are being shifted when we start talking about gentrification and how we, as, as their representatives, are going to bring their voices to the table. So this is our opportunity to bring their voices to the table and, and how the GPS is gonna keep them here when we start telling people from other places, come to Savannah, see what Savannah's about, see how we are growing and how we are attracting some of the best talent that we have, but we want to make sure that our talent that we have here is actually benefiting from a city that we are growing, and a city that we are building, and a city that we are highlighting to everybody else. So thank you for your presentation, thank you for, again, highlighting the portions of the, of the process that people don't know about. And I think every time we go into our communities, it's a unique experience, so as we use those experiences of every, we don't have to always go and have a, a nighttime meeting, but we can have an opportunity to have satellite meetings with our neighborhood presidents, we can have staff to come out in different, unique ways. The good thing about this council is we can, under the City Manager, have a opportunity to be unique, to meet the needs of our community in different ways. So again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just thank you for this opportunity and for giving us.
Thank you, Alderman, lay it, and Alderman, lay it.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. So the people from the 1st District, I may represent most of the marginalized people in the city based on demographics, based on what the US Census is saying. And so I would place three distinct levels of, in, in the 1st District. If you look across that river, that's the 1st District. When you see that hotel coming up in the convention center, that's probably the, the higher end of the demographics. Out near the county line, you have the Highlands, and that's more of a middle class, and they're concerned about quickly sliding down that scale. That's what I'm hearing from them. And then right there in, in good old West Savannah, there are 10 neighborhoods considered mostly low-wealth communities. And growing up in that Gullah Beach corridor, and they say y'all talk Gichi, and we do, and we did, but we're more kind of bilingual, because the Gullah Beach people say, start out like it gonna hold out. Start out like it gonna hold out. And so if we look at the premise of what we're doing here, I believe in the process, very much so, and thank you for your work. But like I said to you, Jay, on Tuesday when we met and spoke, the devil is always in the details. And so I know we had the real task force, and they did a lot of work, and I respect that. But I don't know how many of those people in that middle corridor over there had an opportunity to serve on that, and their voices were heard on that task force, because I didn't get an opportunity to recommend anyone for that task force, so I don't know if that voice was heard. And then we're talking about the community advisory group, is that a group we, did we assign someone to that?
That's a group that was created for the, I believe, council, and is forming that advisory.
We did, we did, so we probably had a pointy on that. So, so that's a concern, because I think all of us are familiar with the little graphic cartoon on social media where you had the ball field and the kids standing there that depicted equity as opposed to equality. And those are two distinctly different things. When I got elected to serve here and started in 2020, I came with like 12 different equity policies that I wanted to see implemented because of, I lived experience in the people I represent, they were like a community benefit strategic approach, because I was the person that had the problem with our strategic approach, that it was outdated and not serving and, and providing the benefits of the people that I served. Also, from that community benefit strategic approach, I was pushing for a community benefit ordinance that would lead to a community benefit agreement. And this community benefit strategic approach is what we see in Savannah GPS by any other name. It's a community benefit strategic approach, and that's a great thing, because we're moving in the right direction there, and I appreciate that. But in that middle corridor, those 10 neighborhoods, six of those suffer from environmental injustice. And I'm not seeing that enough in this city, the voice that representing those people and that voice. People are dying, and we're gonna prove that pretty soon, because no one in all these years, partners, everybody who's been to the table with the big grants and the big money, no one has really came and said, let's do the work to show the suffering of these people and, and the health conditions of these people based on all of this nasty industry and, and what's in the air and what's in our water. I was up last night a couple of hours because the vibrating was going on and the noise was going on. So therefore, when my clock went off, I hit it to snooze some because of those two hours, you know, that I'm up hoping that they're calm that noise down, and that's what we experienced living in this corridor. I'm not seeing and hearing enough that, I know we have an opportunity in this process to bring those issues up, but it's need to be such a driving concern, and I'm just not seeing and hearing that from those, representing those 10 neighborhoods in, in that middle corridor about the environmental injustice. Again, I believe in the process. Wherever you have the most problems, there you have the most opportunities. So we're looking forward to engaging in this work, but we're gonna have to make sure that we utilize this work in an equitable way, because development, community development is going to be the biggest thing that's going to impact the residents that I serve. And you know, when we make better for the least of these, the people at the top, they're gonna benefit. And so now we need to be thinking about development, community development, economic development, and we have opportunities right now. The worst opportunity is to create better conditions. Instead of more industrial development that's already killing folks, we need to be looking at community development. Eastern Walth, Western Walth, we got an opportunity. The Weepin' Time property, because when you look at community benefit strategic approach, you got to consider A, B, C, D, asset-based community development. We have these wonderful assets. We Gullah Beach people, we built the city, we made the bricks and laid the bricks. So we have an opportunity right now to take those assets and create community wealth, not only for the people and uplift them like we often say we like to do, but for this entire city. You know, we, we have that Waterworks building that our people built and made those bricks over there. The Weepin' Time properties where 429 enslaved men, women, and little baby Valentine, two weeks old, was sold. And now we want to put a, a, a homeless shelter and warehouse and trucks on that property, when we could put something there that will uplift this, the people in that community as an asset in this city and this region, and we could make it a destination, because people want to know about the history. These are the things we gotta talk about, these are the things we have to work on, these are the things that's going to bring us the equity that we, that we strive for. So again, I, I do thank you for your work, I believe in this process, and we're gonna really have to put the issues, place the issues on the table that will make a change. Gentrification, we have to be careful about how we use these terms, because that's an economic phenomenon. The market drives that. But the worst aspects of gentrification is forced displacement, and we're seeing that. So gentrification, forced displacement, let's, we, we, we could do things with policy to ward off the negative aspects, and we could embrace through A, B, C, D, asset-based community development, the opportunities that gentrification present in order to do just that thing, because we want to live, work, play, and create generational wealth in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we need to go ahead and talk.
Just, just one thing.
I mean, it is real brief.
It's real brief. I just, we, Miss, I didn't mention that Dr. Miller, the claim from the Arami House, has been working with environmental justice and injustice for over 50 years in the Weepin' Time project. We just want to, there were 400-plus slaves that were sold and not buried, and in that property, they didn't find a chicken bone. We need to move on and help people and do what they need to do.
No one ever said that. Ignorance is bliss. Ignorance is bliss. No one ever said that.
Equity, equity framework is a method, it's a destination, it's a path, it's a journey. The purpose of the framework is important, because we have to be able to influence and change the things that we get to influence and control. And I think it's very important for us, because there are some things we don't control. Either we don't control them legislatively, we don't control them legally, and although it's really, really good to talk about those things and certainly bring light to them, I think it's very important that the framework keeps us focused on the things that we directly implicitly control. So I appreciate, I, I.
We have inputs.
Well, again, we, we have voices, but again, the framework is for what we control. And even with the real task force, and since Dr. Johnson is here, the goal here was the five areas that affected Savannans, and some things we could not control. We couldn't control education, for example, or environment, but we lifted those things because it affected folks, and hopefully create an opportunity for those entities that address those things will be able to do it, to be able to affect positive change in those things, those areas. So thank you very much, and we appreciate that. And Dr. Johnson, thank you, sir, again, for your work, and I thank you for coming off the bench some years ago, really to create the real task force and the transformative report that gave us a path forward. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Glad it was useful.
Oh, it, and we're gonna definitely do a reel too now, so, thank you. Mr. Manager, before we go to Construction Manager at Risk, I wanted just to look up a quick, simple thought, and I'll, I'll say it, and then we'll just leave that where it is. Our life is changing in this world as it relates to contracting and procurement. We're hearing things, we're seeing things, it's all over the place. And I think that obviously you, the City Attorney, will keep council briefed as legislation changes or as federal regulations change. We, we trust you all to help keep us within the letter of the law, but within the intent of our intentions as this changes. Again, every day seems to be something different, and I just trust that you'll keep us informed as this process continues to evolve. With that being said, we're gonna talk about Construction Manager at Risk.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So moving on, we want to, Construction Manager at Risk, this is a procurement tool, a procurement strategy, and a project delivery method that the City of Savannah is. that the City of Savannah is beginning to use and getting to use more for specific projects. We wanna have a briefing with council and a discussion with council about what CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk projects are. What are the other types of procurement strategies we use for project delivery? And why we use CMAR for certain types of projects and not others? Why we use other procurement methods for projects and not CMAR? And how all of those projects relate to kind of our other interrelated procurement policies such as Savannah Furs or Savannah Business Opportunity ordinances that we have in this city. So without further ado, and I know we're a little bit behind time, but I think team's gonna make sure we're effective in moving forward. Let me introduce our Senior Director for Capital Construction and Real Estate, Kristy Lawrence, to move through this presentation. And she's gonna have some help for team's bad members if we go forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this presentation was a collaboration between myself, Miranda Lumpkin-Lotson, Senior Director of Economic Development, and Ron Feldner, our Chief of Water Resources. So what is CMAR? CMAR stands for Construction Manager at Risk. It's an alternate project delivery method used for constructing capital projects. With CMAR, the city hires the design team first, the architects and engineers. Then we bring on the CMAR contractor while design is still underway. The CMAR then works with the city and the design team to help manage and develop the cost data, project schedule, and overall construction planning early in the process. The reason it's called at risk is because once the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, is set, the contractor generally takes on a majority of the risk of cost overruns, such as design errors, missing details, or unexpected conditions. So comparing delivery methods, let's talk about how CMAR compares to traditional design bid-build. So traditional design bid-build, how it works, the city hires the contractor after the design is complete. The city must award to the lowest bidder. The designer and the contractor work separately, and the construction cost is known after design is finished and bids are received, not before. The pros of using traditional design bid-build are that it's a simple and very familiar process, and it works well for smaller, straightforward projects. Cons of design bid-build, bids often exceed our cost estimates. We've been seeing limited competition, sometimes only one bid. We must award to the low bid, not necessarily the best value. We can't weigh qualifications or experience in our awards. It's a sequential process that often slows delivery. There's minimal collaboration between the designer and the contractor. And value engineering often, often happens late after bids are received, and it leads to redesigns and delays. So in contrast, Construction Manager at Risk, how it works, the city hires the contractor during design to give cost and schedule input. The city selects the CMAR based on their qualifications and also their fees. The city designer and contractor work together as a team, it's a very collaborative process. Construction costs is developed collaboratively during design. Pros of this method, it's a qualifications-based selection focusing on experience and expertise. There's team collaboration between the city, designer, and contractor. There's early cost and schedule input from the construction company that's going to be managing the work for better budget alignment. The GMP provides cost and schedule certainty. We've seen a much stronger market response. Typically, four to eight proposals in response to our CMAR RFPs versus one to three for design bid-build. There's open book pricing, which ensures full cost transparency. And there's better overall value by reducing change orders and redesigns. The cons of this method, it does require more team coordination, and it's not always needed for small, simple projects. So the CMAR procurement process, this is a two-phase process. Phase one, the pre-construction services phase, is the initial award. The city selects a CMAR through a competitive request for proposal or RFP process based on qualifications, experience, the DBE plan, and fees. The CMAR then works alongside the city and the design team during design to provide cost estimates, schedule input, and constructibility reviews. This early coordination helps keep the project's scope, design, and budget aligned. The second phase of the procurement process is the construction phase or the GMP award. During the design phase, the CMAR develops the guaranteed maximum price for construction. The GMP sets the maximum project construction costs and includes some contractor pricing and DBE participation. The CMAR is responsible for completing the project within the approved budget and schedule. And the city can choose to either accept the GMP or reject it and competitively bid the project. But it's critical to point out that city council must approve the GMP before construction can begin, just like they would a construction bid. So I've got an example project to share with you, the Eastside Gemmet Park, which is currently in design. This is an example of CMAR collaboration and value engineering in action. So we're currently at about 60% design, which is, we call, design development. The CMAR has provided us a detailed cost estimate showing that the project is over budget. So the city, design team, and CMAR met to collaborate on ideas to save costs and value engineering measures. So some of the ideas that came forward were things such as simplifying wall and ceiling finishes, adjusting roof materials and insulation, using alternate storefront and glazing systems, evaluating flooring and gem surface options, and revising mechanical and plumbing layouts for efficiency. So these discussions occur before construction, allowing informed decisions to align scope, quality, and budget. So this demonstrates CMAR's open book collaborative approach to cost control and budget adherence. So again, we're working with the CMAR on this one, trying to get the project down, but it's happening prior to the design documents being complete. So how we select a CMAR? We use a competitive RFP process. Each proposal that the CMAR submits has two parts, their qualifications package and a sealed fee proposal. The proposals are evaluated on these criteria, experience and qualifications, their project approach, their DBE and local DBE participation plan, and their fees, which are reviewed separately after scoring of the other items. How we evaluate the CMAR proposals? A selection committee of three to five subject matter experts is put together. It includes staff from outside the requesting department, and that committee reviews and scores the proposals. Each committee member independently reviews the proposals using the criteria in the RFP, which are the qualifications, experience, approach, et cetera. The group then meets, this meeting is facilitated by purchasing, to discuss and finalize the disc- the scores. And no discussion occurs outside this meeting. The DBE participation is scored separately by the DBE office, and then fees are scored separately by the purchasing department. The non-communication policy ensures fairness, which means the proposers or the CMAR's who submitted their proposals may only contact the purchasing representative. They are not allowed to have any contact with other city staff during this process. And then the highest scored firm, the highest ranked firm, is recommended for award. So what's included in the CMAR fee proposal? The CMAR firms generally provide these three pricing components. The pre-construction services fee, which is a lump sum fee, a fixed amount for their design phase work, their cost estimating, scheduling, and constructibility reviews. Then they submit a construction services fee, which is a percentage of the final guaranteed maximum price that covers the CMAR's management overhead and profit of the project. And then we've got the general conditions cost, which is a maximum number. And this is a detailed estimate for their field and site costs, such as their staff, trailers, utilities, insurance, safety, and temporary facilities. And these are sometimes broken out into labor and other costs for general conditions. So here's an example project, the Civic Legacy Arena Removal Project, which council approved the pre-construction services at last council meeting. The estimated construction cost for this work is $10 million. The pre-construction services fee was $15,000. The general conditions cost for labor is $242,000. The general conditions cost for other costs was $230,000, and this was for non-labor item, items such as temporary facilities, utilities, insurance, and site security. Their construction fee percentage is 2.95%, which based on an estimated construction cost of $10 million is $295,000. This represents their overhead and profit. So their total fee for this project is estimated to be $782,736. And now I'll turn it over to Miranda.
I'll continue the presentation where Kristy left off, covering the, oh, what happened? It would be technical.
I don't know what happened. It's all one. One more. That's it, you can. Perfect. Thanks.
I'll continue the presentation where Kristy left off covering the DBE and LDB participation within CMAR projects. The responding or proposing CMAR teams are to incorporate DBE and LDB participation within their proposals to the city. There are two opportunities, as Kristy indicated, for that to be incorporated at each phase. Likewise, for our construction projects, the city establishes a participation goal for CMAR projects. We ask the proposing teams to meet or exceed the city established goal of 20% DBE, including 10% local DBE participation. This approach is consistent with our participation strategy and provides opportunities for MWBEs, minority and women-owned businesses, to participate in city projects. Before I take my seat, Mr. Manager asked that I provide a snapshot of LDB participation for the year in 2024. Our project total dollars was 106 million, 106.9 million dollars. And that, of that, 26.3% or 24.6% was overall DBE. That netted $15.28 million, or 14.27 was spent with local DBEs, giving us 58% of all DBE dollars remaining local to this community.
So in summary, how we're strengthening project delivery and trying to improve our overall quality, timeline, and cost on our capital projects. We're expanding the use of Construction Manager at Risk, or CMAR, just like we've gone over today, to improve that quality and cost and schedule control. We're using the right procurement strategy for each project, one size does not fit all. We're partnering, partnering with the right expertise early to enhance quality and accountability. We're ensuring the right project management structure is in place from planning through completion. And we're focusing on collaboration, transparency, and predictability across all capital projects. And just to show how this aligns with our GPS strategic plan, I'm not gonna read this whole slide here, but we've identified, you know, three of our strategies that directly align with GPS in this effort.
Thank you, Kristy, thank you, Miranda. And as we move through the discussion, I wanna follow up on something the mayor said. We're watching very closely what's happening at the federal level and at the state level as it relates to DBE goals and requirements in public procurement. We have a local Savannah Business Opportunity Ordinance that was last amended in 2022. We're gonna continue to follow that ordinance. And as you can see, and thank you, Miranda, our 2024 numbers performed above goal when it relates to our SBO program. So I wanna, wanna note that out. The CMAR projects, you know, in, in some ways actually give us more opportunities for that participation than some of our other procurement methods. So I wanna make sure to be clear that CMAR also participates in our SBO program as well. And it's often a place where we can get higher than our goal percentages of 20% and 10%. So with that, we'd love to open up for any questions about the CMAR procurement strategy or the delivery method. And thanks for, Council, for asking us to put this on the board.
City Manager, in reference to the seriousness as the mayor opened up with and what you just said, in reference to the, the initial work that I brought to our council back in 2014 to develop the ordinance for the SBO. And, and in working through that and getting more of our minority women business-owned enterprise businesses involved, involved at that time. And then we had to convert over, in between 2015 and 16, over to the disadvantaged business enterprise ordinance in which our SBO ordinance was, was developed and voted on during, during that administration at that time. And currently, as we are potentially to implement our SBO, and this is so important to our public, so our public can understand and not get so uncomfortable with what is going on nationally in reference to bringing this home locally. And as our city manager said, and thank you, city manager and city attorney, for continuously to keep your, 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 your hands on the pulse of this serious work. And as the mayor said, it's just real time. You wake up, one thing is going on with the federal government, and, and it trickles down, it's real. And it trickles down to our city. But our SBO statement states that the mayor and ultimate of the City of Savannah shall provide equal business opportunities to all persons seeking to do business in the city. We're still there. The goal of the Savannah Business Opportunity Policy is to increase the utilization of local, small, minority, women-owned, and disadvantaged business enterprises in all areas, we still there, of procurement of the city, including small contract purchases, materials, and equipment, and in professional services. The SBO program will continue to be administered through our city manager with the support of all the city departments that are engaged in the procurement of, of goods and services. Further, the provision of the SBO policy shall apply to all eligible contract awards by the city, subject to the requirement of an outside funding agency accepted as specially exempt herein. So I wanted to put that statement on, on the table and to, as, as businesses in our city do not get nervous about what we, what we're doing here in the City of Savannah. But we are talking reality, and we will inform the community as we get the information moving forward. City Council, any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I have a question, not for you, Christopher, for Miranda. Can you talk to us about your, I looked at your results, and this looks great. Total project dollars for DBE and local DBE, and local DBE participation, your snapshot for 24. Can you explain or tell, talk about how you or your office monitor the DBE and the local minority participation? Talk to me about the process.
So after council award, once goals are established on projects and beyond council award, we have a contract compliance officer that monitors the project through payment processing as well as visiting onsite the projects to make sure.
What that entails?
That entails site visits as well as communication with the DBEs on the projects through the location to completion.
Okay, so your internal records would include for each project... Okay, so your internal records would include for each project the names of the local participating minorities as well as minority participation in general, not just the reports that the CMAR or whoever is presenting to you?
That's right.
On each project?
On each project.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
All the women around the bright?
I'm just trying to figure out this, the CMAR. This has been my experience of sitting here, and so are you suggesting to us that all of the capital projects that we've been voting on started out with CMAR?
Not all of them.
No.
And...
I'll say that, Christie, and you can fill in. No, CMAR is a procurement strategy and delivery method that we've just begun to use in the last year and a half or so, and we're going to use them for specific projects. Most of those that are more complex projects, mostly vertical construction, likely projects that include restoration or some connection to an existing building. So you think about the Park Gym expansion, you think about the I&amp;D plant. Those are going to be projects which have a very, very complex work nature, and then you've got to be able to... The CMAR is the most efficient and effective way.
You just answered, because my next question would be, and you just said we started using this within the last year?
More frequently. The arena was a construction manager was a project as well.
I remember that because I'm talking about while I've been sitting here, we've been voting for stuff that have been... The cost is overrun and several other things that CMAR is supposed to put in place. My vote has determined that those things weren't in place because we've had cost overruns and we had to negotiate different things. And I'm thinking from this definition, it's called at risk because they're supposed to take care of all of the majority risk of cost overruns, design errors, missing details, or unexpected conditions. Not only have we had been in suit because of this, and so are you going to say, you're telling us that this is going to eliminate some of the things that we have experienced on this council so that we had to vote for because of cost overruns?
CMAR protects against those, yes. So if we change the scope, then, you know, the scope changes, and we may have to pay more for that scope change. But if the CMAR is designed, the construction manager is there during design, they understand any geotechnical work that was done, they're helping to shape that work, shape that understanding of how you're going to construct the building, and therefore, as a matter of the contract and the guaranteed maximum price, is taking on the risk of delivering that project as stated in the GMP to the city at their risk of... So if they experience disruptions with labor or material cost overruns or what have you, those are things that are at risk for the construction manager because we've agreed on a price and a delivery method for that project.
Mr. City Manager, I understand all of that.
Yeah.
Right. I get that, and that's why I was asking, moving forward, we're going to definitely use this. And so this CMAR...
For some project.
For some project.
For some project.
I get that too. I understand, and it leads to my next question. Okay. So it also says that you use five independent, or three to five people that sit on council to do that?
No, ma'am, no, no. I have to sit on council.
Not on council, I mean on staff. I know what I want to say.
Yes.
So these five or three people who sit on there, how are they determined? Who determines from the administrative staff? Is that you or the procurement staff?
No, the procurement staff and the project, the sponsor department is going to collaborate to pick the reviewers on any particular review.
And so just a quick question, what is the prerequisite, not only them working in that administration or that particular project, what is their knowledge base on how they determine who's going to get this project? How do they determine that? What's the prerequisite for that?
It's going to change based on the project, right? So for the gymnasium addition at Park, not only are we going to have capital construction professionals, engineers who understand, you know, what it means to have a site plan and what that means to construct, but we're also going to have, you know, I don't know who was on that review panel, but I'd like, there were some recreational professionals as well to kind of understand the proposal and understand what's going on so that we can work through what kind of materials are appropriate, et cetera. For projects involving water resources, you know, we have several PE engineers in water resources, whether we're talking about conveyance projects, water treatment projects, we're going to have those experts that are on our staff in reviewing those proposals as well so that we can provide some input and that we are ensuring that the proposals that we're seeing, we're storing those based on our needs.
Okay, so that leads to my other question. When we talk about equity and how these contractors are given out to people, and we always say Savannah first, so if that is the case, how do we... And I think you said something that triggered why I'm asking this. You said that there are different people at different times depending on that particular project.
That's right.
And so is there some framework to make sure that they're consistent in how they determine who gets these awards? Because we're seeing and we're talking about the same people getting the same awards all the time. How do we change that based on this equity and the stuff that we've been talking about today?
We're, you know, I think we've done a very good job in our procurement and our purchasing over my time. I think we have some maturing as a... Maturing as a system, we're doing more complicated procurements like CMARs. You know, we're going to continue to level up our ability to put out... Because we save money in the procurement space, right? That's where we save money, and that's where we save time. So, you know, we're going to continue to level up and add skills and add expertise where we need them to make sure that we've got the right RFPs, make sure that we're picking the right procurement strategies and delivery methods, that we've got the right technical reviewers on the technical review panel, that we know exactly what we're looking for when we're doing a CMAR versus when we're doing a bid build, a traditional project. And, you know, so those things I think we're very good at. I think we're going to get better. We've talked with, and I've talked personally with bidders that did not end up being recommended and heard about their experiences and know that they have expertise in other places and have known these things in other jurisdictions as well. If there are things that we can learn from each other on those processes, we're going to continue to do so on how we, you know, just continue to level up on being more sophisticated in how we get projects and what we consider.
Mr. City Manager, just from my edifice, I would want to know, and I'm sure that other members from this council, I'd like to see two of our current CMAR projects, and I'd like to see if there is in comparison how that particular contractor or that person was chosen, and if there is any inconsistencies or consistencies of how they were chosen. That shouldn't be difficult to get.
No.
Any one else?
Let me hear. Could I...
Just one second.
Could I just understand her question?
Just one second.
Is that okay? I just want her to repeat. I want to understand her question.
And so we have active...
Thank you.
We have active CMAR projects, right? And we have, you can tell that they're different firms, right? I want to know, he can pick any two, I want to know if there are any consistencies or any inconsistencies on how they were determined to get to that point.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
All the men?
Yeah, I like that. Thank you.
Mill Leagley?
Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation. I just have two questions. Miranda, you said that there's a person here in the city that oversees DBE participation and what have you?
Buying explosion?
Yes. Who is that person?
Salamari Mohica Ravello. Salamari Mohica Ravello.
Okay. How often does she go on... That is a female, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. How often does she go on these sites to actually see that DBE participation is actually taking place? And does she also make sure that the number of DBE participants under that subcontracting company is actually there onsite? And let me tell you why I asked this. Because during the arena process, that was not the case, and that's why it was so much question about DBE participation and so many meetings about DBE participation. So is she physically now, or when did she start doing that?
She was not with us during the arena process.
So who was? Because was that being implemented, or is that just starting now since she got there?
During that time, even Miranda Lotson was not in place yet.
She was because I spoke with her.
No, she was not. I was here. She came in on the end. She came in on the end.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about when I got here.
Yeah, she was at the end.
So I'm not talking about in the beginning. I'm talking about when I got here, when me and you met with all of the contractors and what have you.
It was only me and Dionne Gibbs at that point.
Okay, so we didn't have, that's what I'm asking. We now have somebody in place. That's what I want to know.
Yes.
Okay. Now, huh? She said a year and a half.
She's been here a year and a half?
She's been here since about 2003.
Since 2003?
I'm sorry, 23.
Oh.
2023?
2023.
Okay. Now, and I think, Christie, this is a question for you. The CMAR, do they typically self-perform physical construction? Do they actually do, they're not supposed to do any construction? They're just overseeing the pre-construction?
Typically, they don't self-perform. They just manage their subcontractors.
They just manage the... Wow, that's interesting. Okay. Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Lumpkin, we talked about, you said about the DBE participation on some of our projects. I'm still waiting on that list. I didn't see it. You did? Well, I didn't get it, so... Well, I tell you what...
And get that too.
Thank you so much. And could you make sure I get a hard copy? Just put it in my box, okay? Let's see. Okay, that person. Now, is the IMP...
The question that you asked last two weeks ago?
Yes.
There on the Tuesday memo.
Oh, those are the questions? Okay, well, I... We had a meeting with you, so I didn't look at the memo.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just give me a hard copy.
We got you.
All right. Thank you. So now, let me ask you this, Mr. City Manager. The IMP project...
The IMP.
I'm sorry, IND project. Thank you. Thank you. Is that a different type of project than any other project that we have here in the city? Is that like a special?
Here, I mean, it's a... Yes, being one of the largest capital construction projects in our history.
I understand that, but I'm saying, do we not do that project the same way we do other projects under the CMAR? Is that like a special?
It's a CMAR procurement, just like other CMAR procurement's work.
Oh. We got to have a conversation. All right. Thank y'all for your presentation.
Anyone else?
I got another question.
Wait, 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 wait. Anyone else? All the women in here?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all, Chris, Miranda, for the presentation. The Construction Manager at Risk project and this concept is not new. It's been around. When I worked in local government, I was at Public Works, one of the team, putting the bids together to get contractors to bid. When I left local government, I was working for contractors going after those contracts. I worked for a lot of the local contractors as a consultant, helping them secure local bids, national bids. And one of the desires of the local contractors is that we have this in place on some jobs, on certain jobs, and this was, this was talked about a lot. So it's good to see that the city now will have our person at the table managing all the moving parts because that's what this is really all about. And so that's a good thing. Now, as it relates to our overall bidding process, I'm so glad we had the equity piece early prior to this because I'm not feeling comfortable about this process as far as equity. I think we need to be a little bit more transparent when it comes to the subjective parts of the process. The interviews seem like that's where the numbers always get skewed and go awry when it comes to the time for these subject matter experts in the interview part to have a personal subjective opinion on these contractors because all of a sudden it's going different in different directions. As far as tangible and concrete parts of these proposals, you can't deny those. Numbers are numbers. They speak for themselves. The tangibles are the tangibles, but the non-tangibles and subjectives is where we're having a problem. So I'm glad now we are entering into a more equitable environment so we can start watching these things. I don't know how we have more because of the technicalities in the bidding process. I don't know how we are putting more transparency in that part, but we got to work on something. Y'all are really smart. I know y'all will figure it out. But if we had to make it a thing for us to figure out, we could do that too, but I'm trusting that y'all will be able to work that out under our new GPS, Savannah GPS process. And in saying that the CMAR desire was there for some, a lot of the local contractors, I was hired to look at the city's MWBE program back around 2014, another consultant, very brilliant young lady Carolyn Ellin and I, we did a lot of research, and I pulled information out of Delaware, out of Charlotte, out of Jacksonville, and we were hired by local contractors to do this work. And we came up with a policy that would, we borrowed from all of those and came up with the best measures to create a policy on MWBEs and WBEs. And those people that hired us to do that work, we submitted that work to them, and they gave it to Alderman, Alderwoman Shabazz at the time because she was interested in that subject. So you all did get to see our work that came. And right now, I know we need to revisit that work. Those numbers look pretty good, but I'm sure there's some more work we can do because we wanted to make sure that we could create some prime contractors in our process. And we talked about that in 2020. We hadn't done that. We were going to partner some primes and subs and come up with and help build capacity because that was always a problem, capacity, capacity. And so we haven't done that, so we need to... I've mentioned this to Jake. So that program we talked about a whole lot in this room in 2020, we haven't done anything on that. So I just wanted to mention that, although I do, we're talking about CMAR, but the CMAR process for certain projects is a good way to go. So thank you all for the work that you're doing, and that's my two cents.
Alderwoman Wilder-Bryant and then Alderwoman Bell. That'd be our last person.
Just really a quick question, and this is for Ms. Lumpkin. Your scores continue to increase on this lumpen? Congratulations on your scores increasing. Tell us, this council, what we need to do to get on the fast track so they really... Where is the gap? Where is the problem where there is not more increase in the DBE? What do we need to do? What does the city process? When we talk about processes and systems in place, what do we need to do to encourage more participation in this plan?
There's still a need for more MWBE firms, more minority firms to become certified, and that is our way forward. The more we have certified, it will improve and strengthen the program. So we're watching what is happening with the DBE program federally and with the state, but our local program is where we will rely. And so we want to encourage more minority businesses to become certified by the city of Savannah.
I remember you and your staff, and y'all went over the process and y'all kind of streamlined the application. After y'all did this, did it increase because of that? Yeah, so that's what I'm talking about, things like that so that we can, when there's a roadblock where the participants say they can't do that, and thank you for that challenging and kind of tweaking that application. Is there anything else that can be done other than people wanting to come and actually be in participants?
Continue to be, continue to be consistent in the message so that participation continues to be consistent.
Mr. City Manager, is there a way, we have this channel eight, is there a way that we can encourage that? I've seen the people who do that. We need to do... We need to do more than that. Yeah, can you, some more marketing, since we have a new marketing director? Kind of encourage that so we can get more engagement?
Yes, she's part of that.
Yeah, yeah. Part of the problem that we have is that we have these really good processes. And then we don't get them to the masses so that they can effectively change a positive life. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your presentations. I appreciate y'all.
And we and we used to do that. It was real good when we first got started. Alderwoman Bell?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for staging this presentation today. Thank you, Christie and Miranda, for giving it to us. It was quite insightful. I requested it, and I can tell from the response that the council seemed to benefit from it as well. Thank you, Alderwoman Walden Bryant.
Yes, ma'am.
For asking for a walkthrough of a couple of the projects. I just think for the money that we're spending on C-Mar projects, it's extremely important that we as council members who vote and make these decisions that we understand the process. And going forward, thank you, Miranda, for explaining your process on on monitoring minority participation in these projects. I do, I'm trying really to fall in love with this process. Because I'm from the old, you know, design, what is it?
Design and build.
Yeah, that's what I, low bid. So I'm trying to understand it. And I do understand, I think, that it's important on some projects, for specific projects, because it removes the risk from the city in terms of cost overruns, as Alderwoman referred to. But there's, I still have a ways to go. But I'm really key on, and that's what I'm going to be questioning, monitoring the participation. I don't want us to just take the construction man, construction manager at-risk reports as your, you know, your records or your your word. His word is what we're relying on. He or she, we're relying on what they say participation is, and we are paying accordingly. I want to make sure there's some boots on the ground.
Yes, ma'am. We're also having conversations with the subcontractors as well as the primes. So that communication goes forward.
Thank you, thank you.
City Manager, so thank you all so much.
Thank you. One more presentation, council. We're going to move to our update on the urban camping ordinance that council adopted on June 12th earlier this year. We're gonna hopefully move through it as quickly as possible. So I will turn it over to Stephanie Kable, who is the executive director of the interagency council on homeless assistance. She is joined by our assistant chief, Dalia.
Good afternoon now, and thank you. And we will try to move through this as quickly as possible because we know we stand between you and lunch. So if you recall, on June 12th of this year, we passed our urban camping ordinance here in the city of Savannah. The focus of this ordinance was to connect unhoused individuals to services while reducing health and safety risks associated with public camping. And at that time, I know that you all had some concerns. And I hope today that we'll be able to address those concerns in this presentation to ensure that we are continuing to use this as a tool to help people connect to services and not as a way to punish individuals for their situation. I think the big key takeaway, as we've worked on this ordinance together, is that it's led to improved partnership between our homeless service network and our justice system partners, sparking an unprecedented collaboration in our work together that has allowed for more outreach, connection to services, and done so in a way that is respectful of the individuals who are having the experience of homelessness.
So this is a snapshot of what we did during the the 90-day period. And was 179 citations were issued. Of those 15 arrests were made for, under the urban camping ordinance, six were specifically only for that. So that means of those other 11, I'm sorry, other nine, the, they were arrested on warrants or other charges that were pending against them at that time. And then, so 8% of the citations that we wrote led to an actual arrest.
If you can see here, this is something that Savannah PD produced. This is their urban camping pamphlet. That was one of the things that was requested. How do we get information to to those who are experiencing homelessness? Anything you'd like to share about this in particular?
It just, it's ease of use. It's giving them all of the the associated service providers and service things. There's also QR codes to help pull this up if they have a phone or digital tablets. And then there's an explanation of some of the ordinances that apply to some of the things that they may encounter along with the HOPE unit. And this is just our procedures. You know, we have written procedures for all those type things. This this kind of goes through the warnings in reference to this. And this is all documentation that is given to the officers for training. And this is, that has to do with the property. So if someone has property and they are arrested, it gives them guidelines on what to do with the property and how we handle it internally. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Was that, excuse me?
It's, it should be in the PowerPoint there, but it's.
Slide six in your PowerPoint for this section.
Thank you.
And Savannah PD, just recognizing how important it is to help these individuals maintain their property, has been working very closely to ensure that that happens, that it is secured. Of course, there's limitations. We do not want to take spoiled items or food that could create additional issues. But they are actually working to establish their own storage unit for those items. So if an individual is detained for a while, they will have a place to store those items that they're safe. And so upon their release or connection to services, they can regain those valuable items for themselves. Looking at the service provider side of this. So if you look on the right-hand side, you will see that of those 179 individuals who are cited under this, 135 are engaged in our homeless management information services. So we were able to see that 75% are interacting with our system of care. 30% of the individuals did then go to shelter after that engagement with the officers. The 70% engaged in other additional services, which we will discuss further in the next couple of slides. Forty-seven bus tickets have been purchased through the Homeless Authority to help individuals relocate to confirmed housing since this ordinance has passed. That shows us that, while we don't know that those individuals were directly cited, they did look at this as an opportunity to perhaps make a choice that would allow them get back to to more stable housing opportunities. Those are confirmed housing opportunities as well. The Homeless Authority works very closely and carefully to make sure that we are not just moving our problem to another part or another community. You'll also see that we've also produced, the Homeless Authority produced, an updated guide, which explains the ordinance in a little bit more simplified terms, but also really highlights how do you access those services and even provides a map of how to get to some of those services. Additionally, the ICH has established our criminal justice systems partners and homelessness committee. We are now meeting regularly. That includes Savannah PD, Chatham County PD, Sheriff's Department, both the Sydney and the county manager, as well as leadership from the ICH and our business community, coming together to look for effective solutions. So we're not just creating more problems, but trying to resolve the issues as we move forward. We have seen an increased cooperation between the SPD HOPE team, the Homeless Authority's Streets to Stability Team, as well as Trinity UMC's Square One. So we're really focusing our outreach, much more specifically, multiple points of outreach, so that everyone has that chance to engage in services, learn about services. We know outreach is key. You gotta have it continuously. We have to keep going back and re-engaging those individuals. This also leads us to our next point here, where we now have the Homeless Authority's triage team embedded at Union Missions Day Center. And Union Missions Day Center continues to see increased numbers, as high as 176 during September in one day. And I don't believe that this is just because of the ordinance. I believe it's because we are continuing to increase services there. We have the showers there. We have the Homeless Authority there. We have mental health care options, physical health care options, job training, connections to housing. 132 connections to shelter and housing have been made through the day center from people entering the day center this year alone. And additionally, you'll also see, we've now started our monthly homeless court pop-up sessions at the day center. It's a chance where you can come up and ask any questions. We sit outside, we have card tables out. I have a number of our attorneys from Chatham County. And we're sitting out there and we're just answering criminal case questions, helping them reschedule their cases. If the tickets have been resolved, moving them to service providers that can be an alternative to them as they're addressing these cases. I have to say, we did one the other week. And in my years of working in homelessness, this is probably going to be one of the standout days of my top 10 days. Because 35 people came up to us and they all walked away saying, "Thank you. You helped me get this under control." So even if we can't solve the problem right there, we are building that trust and that engagement to move forward. This is a copy of the Homeless Authority's. They're updated. As you can see, we have the map on there, a great number of services. So there's multiple ways we're connecting. And again, the QR code, because we know for some individuals, they can scan in. As you can see, the 8% of those who have been cited led to an arrest. But more importantly, the 75% who are engaged in our system are engaging in very effective services. 30% in shelter, 30% 30% working with our outreach teams, 15% in engaging with case management, and 9% engaging with legal services. And this is not counting our homeless court. This is actually working with legal services to re-establish identification, vital documents, help address, you know, maybe issues that are preventing them from getting their social security disability, really working through these issues and engaging individuals. Certainly, we know we've not, we've not reached a perfect system yet. We probably never will. We will always be evaluating our services and continuing to make sure that we are meeting those needs. We have identified a couple of programs that we think can really make a huge difference. Dignity Depot, which would be a storage unit of personal property. So individuals not just facing arrest, but just that they need, they would like to enter a service provider or they'd like to enter treatment, but they don't want to lose the things that are valuable to them. So we have a well-prepared and proposal for a service that is ready to go. We have a number attached to that. We also are looking at a funded pet shelter program. Our partners at Renegade Paws have been fantastic working with the Homeless Authority. Homeless Authority has transported quite a number of unique animals with their team. So they are not just taking care of people, they're taking care of their pets. But we would like to be able to expand that and be able to offer that service more consistently and support our partners at Renegade Paws. Again, we have a number, we have an outline for this. The ICH developed both of these programs through the Service Delivery Group with Jen DeLonge helping us develop these programs. And we are now moving these to our Resource Development Group. They're going to meet November 4th and talk about how do we establish the funding to do this and where will these programs live? Lastly, on that needs list, we truly need a sobering center. But this is a bigger need than just for our individuals experiencing homelessness. This is also for individuals throughout our community that need a place where jail may not be the right place for them to go if they are over-intoxicated. But let's get them into a place where they can get on. As lastly, you see, we've been improving our ways that we could apply service. We have a QR code being established, which will instantly refer, make that referral to the outreach team with the Homeless Authority. They've also completed ongoing training that is centered on how do we handle these outreach situations with respect and dignity. And then lastly, we continue to work on how do we provide immediate mental health care. So as the city manager said earlier, you know, there are people that talk and there are people that do. And I think in the case of this ordinance, we have been doing, since this came, come into action, we are doing it. We are continuing to find the resources and bring them to life. And while the ordinance can be a difficult situation to work with, I think we're finding a way to make it continue to be focused on connection to service and not on to criminalization of homelessness. Thank you. Any question?
Thank you all so much for for this presentation. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Just wanted to add a few things. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you, A.C. Gavin. We're joined by the Homeless Authority Chair Woman, Jennifer Davenport, and the Executive Director of the Homeless Authority, Jennifer DeLonge, who, without their partnership, and they're doing none of this where it would be possible. There's nothing in the data for the first 90 days of this ordinance that gives me pause that we're implementing this in a way that's detrimental to either our community or to people in our community who are experiencing homelessness. Been in homelessness a long time in my career. There's a, you know, fall-around therapeutic disruption in helping people to kind of move through the systems and services that we have available. I think the data shows in some real key places where some of that engagement is helping to connect people with services that will be beneficial to them. Whether that's shelter, whether that's transportation support to a permanent home, the actions that council have taken to expand hours, to expand outreach, to expand programs at Union Mission and other key partners. I think, you know, the the ordinance is is testing that system, testing our capacity there. We're gonna have to continue to invest in those programs and those solutions. But I think that this tool, as we discussed back in June, it seems to be a tool that is, that is helping us achieve some of our results. And I want to give a huge thank you to our police department and to our HOPE unit. This is not easy work. And and police officers often have to be everything in our community. Clinicians, therapists, friends, mentors, and law enforcement officers. And they're doing a phenomenal job, being all those things and this ever. So thank you to Chief Cuthbert, thank you, A.C. Gavin, and thank you to the entire community.
Any questions?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lanier, Alderwoman Bell?
Mind a quick, no questions, comment. This is an easy work, and thank you all for the work that you're doing. I have received some phone calls because I'm working with some people on the streets that work with some homeless people, about four phone calls of some, I would say, complaints. And I haven't brought them to you because I realize that this isn't easy and it's a process. And I think everyone involved have to get a little bit accustomed to how we're going to proceed in this area. But we do want to, and and police officers have a lot to contend with. But we we do want to try to treat people well and and respectful, you know, as we do this work. And that's all I'm saying about it.
Alderwoman Bell?
I don't have a question, thanks, Stephanie. As everybody can understand, this is an easy work. Thank you to my colleagues for approving this ordinance. Since I brought it to the council and we did get it approved, I couldn't stop there because someone asked a question. So after they arrested, what then? I did not plan for this to be one of my pet initiatives on council this year. But I couldn't turn my back on it. And Stephanie, to you and A.C. Gavin, I do want to say that there is another bright light that you guys probably haven't been told of. And that is the faith-based community in this city have come together and have decided to be a partner in the work above and beyond what they are already doing. So we met in September. And we are trying to not only get them to do feeding, provide feeding centers or clothes, you know, but also to provide money to support. And I I really to ask, thinking about Pastor Thurman from St. Paul CME. And I just mentioned him because when we got to the end of the presentation, he says, "So what's the ask?" So the ask is for each of those churches to include homelessness in their 26 budget, whatever the amount may be, but I know it will be helpful. And they're still kind of, you know, we still have have an opportunity to engage them even more. So we have their attention and they are willing to step up to the plate. So thank you all. Thank you for all you do and for taking my calls.
Alderwoman Licklin?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think this question is for you, Mr. City Manager. We have, one, two, three, four, five, five day centers. How much money does the city, can I get that information? How much money does the city donate to these day centers? And the reason I ask is because it takes a lot of time, energy, and effort. I've actually worked with Come As You Are Ministries. And I know those people need a lot of help financially for some of the things that they've done. I spoke to, what's her name, over at The Dive? And they need resources. They need financial backing. And and I know you're going to say that. And I know you're going to say that, okay, we can get other entities to help and what have you, but I'm just curious because you hear me say all the time, our city operates on antebellum money. So I just want to know how much of the resources are we giving to these day centers who so desperately need help? So if you could get that information to me, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Alderman Wilderblatt?
Yeah.
I guess my better judgment, I did vote for this, but I feel some anticipation and some anxiety about this, especially when we come to this property. I'm not going to feel that we can move forward on this. I got 50 years, 50 years of community service and 16 of those in law enforcement. I actually ran the property room, and so I would like to see a chain of custody because that's what is important to me. We are saying that there were six arrests for urban camping ordinance only.
Yes, ma'am.
And I get that, all right? So 179 citations were issued.
Yes, ma'am.
And six of those were for urban camping. Can you tell me what time of the day? I would want to know what time because that's important because we keep saying that we wanted to, money is important, right? Money is important, and we wanted to extend the hours. And so I bet you that those arrests were made during the hours that we don't have any available assistance for them. The other thing is, most of the people who are homeless actually have mental health issues. Out of those citations, were they evaluated by your staff, HOPE, that does evaluation on the arrests? And the other question, as they go through the criminal justice system, what is the medium timeframe that they actually stay incarcerated? I'm just trying to get you all those questions at one time. And were those arrests actually attached to felonies or were they all misdemeanors? And the property room from the restee that goes to the county, the sheriff department, I would want to see that chain of custody of their actual property because that's what's important to me. We are saying that homelessness is something that we needed to address, and I voted for that because we did. And we're saying that we have all these partnerships and that you guys are doing a great job with the partnerships. But what about the homeless people and their property? How long are they staying incarcerated because they're homeless? Because that is the question. We're saying that it's not an illegal thing, but it is, and I think so, and that's my opinion after working with homeless people for over 50 years in this community and in Atlanta. And so we have to do better. I know we have to do things, but we're now talking about arresting people, right? We're talking about their property. We're talking about when they get out, are they going to get that property? So is that chain of custody of their property the same thing that the county has? I want to make sure I get at least what the police report that says that some actual property was taken.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm sending you an example of one of those arrests and a property in the property room and how that is. So everything that enters into a property room has to have a chain of custody, has to have release mechanisms, timeframes on all of those. It's under state and federal law that guide those. So we couldn't put anything into a property room without it having a chain of custody and following those guidelines. But as for your other, these are city ordinances. So city ordinances don't carry a lot of, you would say, jail time. They're more on the lower misdemeanor levels. And so with a city ordinance, the, once they're processed, those items that are taken, and we did that training with the officers to show them how we can do things. The only things that like we can't take in are hazardous materials, drugs of, you know, illegal drugs, and any kind of food or things like that that would, you know, spoil or do things like that. So everything else is collected along with their items. And you'll see, we've created larger bags and boxes. We even have larger ones than that that are four foot by three foot. And you can fill those with tents, chairs, things like that. We've got very large backpacks that have come in. So all of those things are held. They have a 90-day, they're all given that information, if it's, whether it's safekeeping or if it's evidence. If it's evidence, that means it's evidence of a crime. That gets stayed as long as there is a, you know, as long as there is a criminal case attached to it. Everything else is safekeeping. And so that person's explained, they, one of the things is we explain to the person where they can get their items from, how they can get them, that we're holding them for safekeeping. And they have up to 90 days to come and get those things. So even if they get out while they're looking for some of the services that can be provided to them, we're still holding on to that property for 90 days.
That's not what I'm suggesting. I know you're doing that. What I am suggesting, you said they're misdemeanor charges, but because I've actually worked in corrections and was a sergeant at the sheriff department, I understand that those people who are homeless who come in there, they don't always stay. They stay longer because they have mental health issues. I'm wanting to make sure that these arrestees who are homeless, that they're getting adequate attention because the sheriff department recently had a death, somebody expired, and they were homeless. I want to make sure that, and I know you were over that, and so I know you're going to do that, right? But I want to make sure that these, that our homeless people, they are citizens, that when they are incarcerated, that they get the medical and mental attention that they need so that we won't have another expiration in the jail that we had because he was homeless. And the other question is, and we all know from experience, and I'm talking from experience, sometimes people come into jail, homeless people, because they want to get off the street, but there are other people who go in there and they create fights, and then they get other additional charges. So that's why the mental health component on that is equally important. And I want to do, we're talking about the visibility. What changed downtown since we enacted this city ordinance?
And so really, I think, and she can answer also, but I think on our end, the, this just gives us legal authority to approach and have those discussions. The majority of these are warnings, and they're giving people time to, officers are approaching and saying that you can't set up here, you can't camp here. And then they explain to them about the ordinance, and then they give them a reasonable amount of time to be able to move, pack up their things, and do stuff. So this is not something where we're coming up and taking people to jail or citing them. We're giving them ample warning, and we've worked with the homeless authority for the last couple of years on trying to do better on giving people some warnings. There are some things on private property that an owner wants someone off right away, we have to address them. But when it comes to this public camping, you know, we have the ability and the leeway to give people opportunities and in the meantime, try to find them things. You know, if there is a mental health issue, our behavioral health unit goes throughout the homeless camps and on a daily basis with the clinician. And so a lot of those assessments are being done. They, you know, might not be there, but officers are already trained that if they see someone that is suffering from a mental health crisis, that they call our VAHU over and have them come do an assessment before any kind of jailing or things like that happen.
So again, now I want to talk about the police officers. And thank you, Gavin. This is one of the question. Okay, so one of the statement. In dealing with this property, were these non-compliances, are they mostly in one particular concentrated area? I'm saying that is, can we equip our police officers with, I know this bag right here probably came from the county jail.
That's ours.
It's yours?
Yes.
So does everybody have this so that when they're going through this property, there is a cleaning mechanism where it's not going to mess up the carcass? As a police officer, I would not want to have something, you know, in my car that's going to, you know, emanate a smell that I have to work in that car until I can clean it up. So are we furnishing our police officers with equipment so they, so it's not discarded? Because, you know, a lot of people who have mental health issues, you don't really know what they have or what they don't have. They're not saying that, that an officer would throw the stuff away. But I want to make sure that they have items in their cars so that their contraband is discarded, but their personal, all they have in the world is taken to there and not because of a smell. Just want to make sure that we close the gap since we initiated this ordinance. Want to make sure that we take care of them as best we can. And thank you for your thing. And I know what you do with the mental health, and thank you for everything. And I want to also thank our community partners, the Land Bank, CHSA, and the homeless authority for the great work, the end results of those 39 cottages. We know that they're working towards doing things that, like the mayor says, taking care of all of our citizens at the same time. So thank you, Jen. Thank you, Jen, again. Jen, I wanted to, I appreciate your time and your efforts in trying to create a better environment for all of our citizens. And thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Alderman LeNeer is going to be our last person to talk on this, and then we, I will need a motion for executive session.
Okay.
So thank you, Mayor Protem. I don't have any questions. I thank you guys for all the work you do. And I just want to lift up a couple of things that I'm going to give to, and I'm going to write it for, to give to your staff, Mr. City Manager, that as we know, we all know next month, it's going to be a potential halt on food stamps for a lot of individuals in our community. So we just all, let's find a way to work together so we'll be able to help some of our houseless, our homeless in our community. But I want to make sure that I highlight that if we can, will we be back here again to get another update from our community partners?
On this issue?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So when we come back, can we get an audit on all of those different processes? And I'm talking about the, when individuals enter certain, through this process, or they go into a homeless authority, or they go into one of our partners? What does that process look like? And once they get in, signed in, what does that look like? And once they return back into the, into the community? Or what does all of those different issues that they go through while they're going through those processes look like? And I wanted to make sure I highlight to you that I had to call code enforcement at one of our, at one of our institutions because they had a very, very high infestation of bedbugs. And they had to call some people in because some of our, some of our homeless was complaining about being bitten by bedbugs and family members that were in there. Also, I wanted to highlight that there were, in some of those areas, they had people that were complaining of being robbed of their personal effects. And also, is there, I heard a rumor of, but I wanted to make sure, is there such thing that they're asking our homeless to pay to stay in certain areas, in certain places that they go to?
Salvation.
Salvation is pay to stay. How can we ask them to pay to stay if they are homeless in certain areas? So that's why some people at gas stations and other places are asking for money, it's not for drugs or for food, but to be able to pay to stay in certain places. And I'm also, I'm going to send an email from, that I received from CAG, that I wanted to highlight to our chiefs that it was, it was an arrest made by one of our officers in the Northwest Precinct. And the officer had an individual in handcuffs, but when he lifted him against the car and pulled him away, he dropped down on this guy's face, who was homeless, broke his jaw. And that guy, I didn't get anything back. I know that he was arrested, taken to jail, and he was a homeless individual. So we're over at CAG also working with our homeless partners to address a lot of the homeless issues that we have. But I wanted to highlight, most of all, that the people that we are saying that we represent, those are individuals that we have to be very sensitive to because of mental health issues and also because they deserve some type of decency. Because we don't know anyone around this table who may become homeless or may go through some type of issue or have a family member that may deal with that type of issue. But I will have this written out and give it to your officer.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We'll answer all those questions. And yes, I think we should do not only a continuation on this, but assistance be done, and we'll work with our partners on being able to do this.
Real quick, Alderman LeNeer?
Yes, thank you. Stephanie, is it? Okay. I don't know how we could go about doing this, but I see a lot of homeless individuals on our medians, and they leave a lot of trash. Is there some way you could put up a sign? Because obviously, we can't do anything about them standing on those corners asking for donations. But is there any way you could convey the message to them, clean up where you stand? Because when I tell you, especially on Abercorn and Victory Drive, Abercorn and Durin, the major thoroughfares, that's where you see a lot of trash. And, you know, I can knock them for trying to get money to get a place to stay, but clean up the area because it's looking really, really bad in our city.
Something on the media?
Yes, sir. Alderman LeNeer? Move to enter executive session.
Thank you all so much. We have a motion and second, all in favor? All closes.
Third floor.
We will be back in our chambers at 2:00.
We did something on the median. It's not being implemented. What did we do? We did something last year.
Also got some modern artifacts as well. We got a lot of plastic and plastic bags and just rubber and all kinds of modern debris. So by digging these sample units, we realized that the upper zone was actually mixed up pretty heavily. You know, this area had been used as a parking lot for several years with cars rolling back and forth, and a lot of the ground had eroded. But even before that, when the houses were torn down in the 1970s, a lot of the ground surface and the debris got mixed up by the machinery that was tearing down the houses. So even though this looks like a really good zone intact, it's actually got a pretty good mixture of things going on in it. So we got below that zone and started screening this, or sifting this soil here, here and down below to where I'm standing. And then we started getting to parts that were actually intact. The artifacts in these zones do get older as you go down, and they're not mixed up, they're not all disturbed. So that's what we like because it's a lot easier to figure out who belongs to what, which artifacts belong to which people and how are they being used over time. So we got a good sample of that through all these units that we screened the soil before we came along with the backhoe and started stripping these larger areas, which helped us get rid of the disturbed zones and get down to the intact features. And we have a series of features throughout here. As you look down these units, you can see a lot of what looked like craters. It's really nice and flat until you get to these craters. And each one of these areas that have been dug out were features that the different archaeologists working on the crew came along and excavated and documented each one. So you can see, there's a lot going on in this small space, a lot of pits, a couple of post holes. And again, this part of the site showed more artifacts from the late 17, early 1800s. So this area was more, used more heavily during that period, and we have evidence for that from the features that we're finding in the ground and from the artifacts that are within these features. And I'll give you an example of some of the more recent artifacts, features we're finding. Over here, we have a series of three features that are all real similar, and they're all really interesting. They're all posts. And you can see, it's been dug out, it was a circle. You can kind of see what it looked like before it got dug out. There's still part of it in the wall here. You can see the outline here, up here. And then you can also see another outline right here. Perhaps you can see that? But basically, this looks like it was dug out, could be a post. They put the post in, filled the back dirt back in, and the post rotted and got filled in with other layers of dirt and artifacts. But the interesting thing about these three posts are they're very large. They're larger than the average post that you would expect to find. They're also very deep, deeper than what you would think would be the average post. And also, they didn't have any, are very little ceramics in them, very little dishes, a lot of iron hardware, a lot of nails. So the types of artifacts coming out of them, the depth of the feature and the size of the feature all suggest that these three artifacts are probably industrial posts, that these posts were put in for some industry and most likely to do with the railroad because the roundhouse is right behind us or right next to us. So if we look at these posts, if we find others on the site, we can figure out from the patterning of the post, possibly what the railroad was doing out here. They were, we know they owned the corner lot at one period of time. So how are they using this lot? And what were they doing with these giant posts out here? It's kind of interesting. This feature over here shows a better example of a post. It's similar to this one, but you can actually see what we call the mold. You can actually see that dark zone in there is where the post was set. They dug the hole, the post was put in there, they backfilled all this with dirt. And then when the post rotted, it left that really good post mold. So we have three really good examples of probably industrial period posts out here. Okay, all around me, you can see all these little flags. The pin flags mark spots where there were stains in the ground, what we call features. You can see this particular area, it's all dug out. Everywhere it's dug out was a different kind of feature, different kind of stain. And several of these were pits, these small shallow pits. And then the deeper ones were actually posts, where posts were. And they either rotted in the ground or in some cases, people yanked the post out and other dirt and debris fell into the post hole. Also, we're getting, well, behind me here, you can see an excavation that's in progress. Whoops, I'm getting caught up here too. So this particular spot was a big circle here. You can see the outline, the edge of it. An archaeologist cut it in half, dug out this half. And you can see the profile real well. You can see it's a nice post that's actually in and out of angle. And you can see some of the objects that got caught up in the post after the post rotted and it caved in and debris got washed in and filled in. So you can see some of the artifacts, got a bowl there, an oyster shell, a bone, rib bone from an animal. So all kinds of things going on there. You can see the nice post mold in here. You can see the same thing on this side. There's another post that's vertical and it's really nicely defined in here too. So the neat thing about the post again, or they can tell us where structures used to be. If we figure out the patterns, if we mark all the posts here and figure out the patterns, we excavate each one and keep the artifacts separate, then when we, we'll know which posts go together, which ones date from the same time period. So we can then figure out of all the posts out here, which ones are connected, which ones we can draw lines around, say, there was a square structure here, there was an outbuilding here from the 1800s or this house is from the 1920s. So we can all really figure out what was here even though there's nothing standing, nothing above ground to see now. We have other kinds of features out here as well. To my right, you can see a big trash pit. It might turn out to be a privy, we haven't excavated it yet. There's one here and then there's one we started excavating. You can see it makes a big circle. We cut it in half and dug out this side of it. And you can see in the side view, what we call the profile, all kinds of different dirt layers when it was filled in, at different time periods. And then you can see a lot of pieces of bottles and broken dishes poking out of the profile there. So again, it's very full of a lot of different kinds of trash. And because of the way we dig it, we'll be able to figure out when the trash was thrown in here and hopefully whose trash it was and how they were using that before they threw it away. So this is a more modern feature, a more recent feature from the 19, probably 40s or so. But it helps us figure out what life was like out in this lot during that period of time. So we have the whole spectrum out here. We've got more modern trash pits. We've got older trash pits from the early 1800s. So the whole mix, so it'll be good information. A good page of history really is what we're looking at all throughout here. Some other kinds of examples of features are over here. Oh, wow, this one looks different. We cleaned it off today. This is actually a square feature. You can make out the stain here. This might actually turn out to be a privy based on the shape in plan view. So we're going to excavate this, hopefully if we have time, excavate it and figure out what's in it and who was using it. Again, get that information about the people that lived out here. So we look at several different things. We look at the shape of a stain in plan view or as you look down on it. And then we look at the shape of a stain in profile or side view as you look across into it to figure out how was that feature used and what created it. So we document everything we do. Part of that documentation includes cleaning it all off, making a map of it in plan and then on side view or profile, and then photographing it. Because once we dig it out, you know, it's easy to forget, well, what did this look like? Which layer was on top of which? You know, where were these bricks placed? So the photo documentation can really help us figure it out. So anyway, that's what's going to be a privy probably, is turning into a privy. And that's the feature that little shell ornament came out of with the F on it. But the upper part, like I said, the shaft part of it seems to be disturbed by, you know, possibly leaders who've been out here over the years digging for bottles, possibly just a modern disturbance where people dig holes and throw their trash on top of other people's trash. So we don't know that yet for sure which one it is, but it's definitely disturbed at the top. We're hoping the bottom's got more potential for information. This shows a nice brick footing here intact. And we've shot all of these features and all of the brickwork and all the different stains in the ground. We've shot all those in with the laser transit. So then we'll be able to make a really big map, a good accurate map of where all these things are located. And that's when you really start figuring out what goes with what. You know, what did, what house did this brick footing go with? Is it on a house that's on the bird's eye view? Is it on a house that's on the sandborne maps from, you know, 1916 or 1871? Or where, you know, where does this fall? Or is it a house that predates all of those maps? So we don't know. So we're going to take our map and overlay it onto some more modern maps and figure out where things were and try to figure out the relationships between all these different features and between the bricks that we have showing up, the brick fittings. And that's just one part of the process of doing the lab work and the final analysis. This is an example of some of the kinds of documentation we do on features. Before we start digging one, we go ahead and map it all in. This shows the outline of the feature and then each of the different colors that show up and different soil colors. We map that in and then we photograph it like we were just seeing with that other feature. And then we cut the feature in half and dig out half of it. And that's when we figure out, you know, what the shape looks like in side view. So for example, we cut this one in half this way and drew what it looked like in side view. And you can still see that over in the ground today because we haven't taken out the other half. But you can see that one that's cut in the middle there. And that one actually turned out to be a root. At first, we thought it was going to be a post because it had the right shape and it kept going down, was pointed, but it kept, kept going. And that was the problem. It kept going and going and we could clearly see that there was a taproot going off of there. So we realized it was in fact a root. And that's really important because when you're getting objects, artifacts out of there, you know, if it's a post, we can tie that post again to structures that were out here in the time period that would have been used. But if it's a tree, then it's just a tree growing out here and the roots kind of grab artifacts as it goes from different time periods. So it's real important to know, you know, where these objects are coming from. You know, anybody can go out somewhere and dig up stuff, dig up a bottle or use a metal detector and find metal objects. And you have an object, but it's kind of like if you have a bunch of pieces of a jigsaw puzzle. You know, if you go out to a different site and find a bottle, it's like finding one piece of a jigsaw puzzle. You go home and put that in a box. You go out to another site, find a belt buckle, you put that home in your box. It's like having another piece of a jigsaw puzzle. And so pretty soon at home, you have a whole box of all these beautiful like pictures, but they don't fit together. They don't make any sense. They might look pretty, but you can't put the picture together. You can't put the puzzle together because they're from all different places. They're from all different places on one site and then from all different sites as well. So it's really the documentation, the procedure that archaeology uses is what, you know, gathers the information from the objects and from the soil around them and the context and the features that they're in. It's the gathering of all that together, the documenting all that, that really helps us learn about what life was like, you know, what the everyday railroad worker had to deal with on a day-to-day basis. Things that aren't in the history books. A lot of folks, archaeologists study, are people that aren't documented in history. They might be people, they're not the great people of history, the rich and the famous or the literate. They might be children, they might be women, they might be people that didn't know how to write. There might be people whose everyday lives weren't of interest to most historians at that time period. So that's why it's so important to do archaeology and to document the, what's in the ground really, to figure out every single thing we can about the people who used the area and used the site. And that's what we hope to do out here. We hope to accomplish that as best as we can in the time constraints that we have. Well, a lot of people ask what happens to this stuff when you're finished and that's a really important question. What's going to happen in this case is, as in the case of every project we've done, we take the artifacts back to the laboratory and all of the notes and the photographs and the maps we've made. We take them back, we wash all the artifacts, we put them into a big computer database and then we start asking questions, well, from the artifacts, from the data that we have. And then once we get all the answers to those questions, we write up a report. We document everything we've done and what we found and what we think it means into a report. And a lot of times, these reports are kind of boring because they're real technical and they, because we have to document every single thing for the future. But also, a lot of times, we'll write what we call popular reports, reports that are geared to the public and that are interesting, exciting and really get across the information that we uncovered.